Thanks, Nick.
Hey, how are you? Yeah, we're getting ready to start.
All right, well, we'll help you. What time is the events start tomorrow? But thanks, Nick. Bye. So, thanks, Nick.
Bye.
I'd like to call this meeting to order. Go call, please, Mr. Karate.
Ms. Alcimondo.
Present.
Ms. Borelli.
Present.
Mr. Accello. Ms. Iannello.
Present.
Ms. Laurentino.
Present.
Ms. Roloff.
Here.
Ms. Torbic.
Present.
Ms. Traverso.
Here.
Ms. Otterelli.
Here.
Hand for the Pledge of Allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Amen.
Adequate notice of this meeting has been sent to all members of the Board of Education and to the Bergen Record in accordance with the provisions of the Open Public Meetings Act, Chapter 231, 1975. At this time, please be advised that all cell phones and electronic devices should be turned off, and we are going to begin with our student representative report.
Hi, my name is Olivia Lash, and I will be reporting on Washington School, all three elementary schools, the high school and the middle school. So, for all three elementary schools, in April, they celebrated neurodiversity with Spirit Week and classroom activities where they brought awareness to autism and neurodiversity. Students thought of their unique qualities and what makes them special. Also, the staff at the elementary schools celebrated Bring Your Child to Work Day, and it was a fun day, meeting all the children and their staff members. It was also an SEL Day where students also learned about careers and explored interests. For Washington School, in April, they also celebrated neurodiversity with Spirit Week and classroom activities and brought awareness to autism. They also celebrated Bring Your Child to Work Day and had a great time meeting all the children of the staff. Now, for the high school, for Bring Your Child to Work Day, we had almost 50 kids in the building. The students did a great job as helpers and bringing them to different activities throughout the building. There was also the Best Buddies Club, who had a Friendship Walk at Seaton Hall this Sunday. AP exams and the NJSLA tests have also begun this week at the high school, so good luck to all the high schoolers taking those exams. Congratulations to 9th grade Grace Ween on throwing 100 strikeouts this season for the softball team. Also, a big congrats to Jack Artemisio and Saoirse Twomey on being selected as Saddle Brook High School's NJIC Sportsman Award winners. A shout out as well to Mr. Iannello on being selected as the American Division AD of the Year. They will be honored at a luncheon at the Chart House in Weehawken on May 29. The Saddle Brook High School Athletic Department would like to send a huge thank you to our Recreation Department Director, Andy Gallo, Diane Bonner, Mayor White, and the Town Council for allowing the high school boys and girls lacrosse teams to use Veterans Field for practice and games this spring. We are ever grateful for this working relationship between these two departments. Moving on to middle school, the middle school celebrated Neurodiversity Month by having a Spirit Week for the staff and the students. Monday was Fun Hat or Head Accessory, Tuesday was Wear Rainbow or Tie-Dye, Wednesday was Show or Wear Something You Love, Thursday was Saddle Brook Spirit Wear, and Friday was Comfy Clothes, which is every day. On May 2nd, the middle school had their spring concert. Thank you to Mr. Ortega and Mr. Cooten for such a great concert. We have some very talented students, and they all did a great job. We are also getting ready this week to start our NJSLA testing in the middle school. On May 9th is Science, the 10th is Science, the 14th is ELA, the 15th is also ELA, and the 16th is Math, as well as the 17th is Math. The middle school's Steam Tank Club, run by Mr. Viorel, and his students have made it to the finals. We are so excited and happy for all of them. They truly put in a lot of time and effort. Ms. Josephson, Ms. Sharp, along with students from the NJHS and React Club, collected plastic and donated it to the Meadowlands Rotary Club. They are partnered with the Trex Company to recycle the plastic into park benches, which are donated to various organizations in North Jersey. The Rotary Club wanted to say thank you to all the students. They have donated a bench to our school district. Thank you for all your hard work and recycling efforts.
Thank you. Okay, for the superintendent's report, Ms. Violet.
Yes, I'm going to share a couple quick updates, and then I will move forward with some of our presentations. I wanted to remind the community that we do have two of our high school students that are up for North Jersey Player of the Week. Voting closes 4:00 PM tomorrow, Thursday. You can vote as many times as you like, but please vote for Grace Ween and Colin Taylor, softball and baseball respectively. I also wanted to thank the Jason Mazer Plumbing and HVAC Company. They did, yes, today, today and tomorrow, I believe. They are awarding the winners of the contests, of the R-Contests that they sponsored for their van in each of the school buildings. And I was at Smith's School earlier today, and the kids were so excited, they were showing me their prizes. So, they awarded first, second, and third prize in each building. I wanted to thank them for involving our students. Let's see. I wanted to congratulate, we had 10 singers at our middle school, high school, who successfully auditioned for the New Jersey High School All-State Chorus. Almost 900 singers from around the state vied for a coveted spot in next year's All-State Chorus. And the accepted members will perform in a festival in November and a treble chorus in February. Two concerts each, one in Atlantic City at the Convention Center and the other at NJPAC in Newark. And then a special congratulations to Rachel Rosales, who was placed fourth in the state. And all four ensembles, our high school concert band, Concert Choir, middle school concert band, and middle school Concert Choir, received a superior rating for their performances. So, congratulations to our music department. I wanted to thank our staff members who participated in the Best Buddies Walk that took place last weekend. They supported us and represented us nicely, so thank you to them. And thank you to our parents for Teacher Appreciation Week is this week and every day. I feel like there's tons of food in each of the buildings. They're really doing a great job supporting our teachers, so thank you. Today was also School Nurses Day, and I know I've missed it, I know there's School Bus Driver Day, and Principal Day and Vice Principal Day, so just wanted to make sure everyone in the school community that you are appreciated. But I just wanted to thank our community for supporting our schools. And last but not least, the highlight of my day this morning was visiting Washington School. They hosted a Muffins with Mom, and it was very well attended, the entire gymnasium was full, and they really enjoyed a cute snack together, and then they did an activity in the classroom. So, thank you to Washington School for hosting that. Okay, moving forward with our agenda. So, tonight, we are going to begin with the Rotary Club. They are going to come up here with some of our students from the National Junior Honor Society. Then, we are going to move to a presentation by some of our staff members on the Nurtured Heart Approach, which is one of our Dreams Grant Initiatives that's district-wide. And then, I will quickly, do a quick recap. We approved the budget last week, but I just want to do a quick recap on the budget presentation so that way the public is aware of everything that we're doing here. So, at this point, I'm going to ask the board if we can move over to the seats so I can have Ms. Josephson, who spearheaded this initiative along with the Rotary Club, and her students, come on up.
Grab a microphone.
Sorry, honey.
Go ahead. Is there only one? You can pass it around, and I'll make sure. Do you want to come up on the stage, or you want to do it up front? It's up to you. Can you guys all go in the middle?
My name is Maria Heller, and I'm the President of the National Junior Honor Society. And with me is one of our advisors, Ms. Jo, and some of our members. We have Gavin, we have Zen, we have Serena. And then, we also have the representative from the Rotary. So, the React Club and the NJHS have been collecting plastic from last year to this year to try and keep it out of the landfills. This school year, we helped by collecting all the plastic bags from the people at the trunk or tree, and I can only imagine us running around trying to collect the plastic while the wind was blowing. The plastic we collected was donated to the Meadowlands Rotary, and then they give the plastic to the Trex Corporation, and they make it into park benches. An example is right up there. The Rotary donates the benches to nonprofit groups in New Jersey, and one was actually donated to our school to recognize our effort for the cause. This week, our club members and advisors worked with the Rotary to assemble our bench. Our partnership with the Rotary is ongoing, and we are continuing to collect plastic. I actually don't know the exact number.
So, I'm the club advisor, and I'm going to introduce Mrs. Yvonne Hassett from the Meadowlands Rotary, and she can fill you in a little bit. The original benches were 500 pounds of plastic. So, it's about 85 large black trash bags, and the Trex Company has raised it to 1,000 pounds. But we're still going.
Hi, yes, I'm Yvonne. And by the way, I'm wearing my Rotary bling, I'm very proud of Rotary, and I'm going to be the president this coming, in July. And I've got all guys in the club, so I'm going to get some more ladies involved, thank you. Yes, they are. Yes, a couple of them lost their wives, and they're still looking now after they passed. And they have some money. I'll talk to you later, okay? Anyway, so, you know, it's funny, because I have a couple of the plastic bags. I mean, this is the New York Post. This is an example of what we miss when we're not looking for this type of recycling. There's all kinds of, by Amazon bags, you buy a lot on Amazon, they take all of that, Trex. We started doing this about five years ago, my husband Carl became the governor of the district, which was Bergen County, Passaic and Hudson County. And guess when it happened? When he took governorship, COVID hit. How do you be a social organization when you can't be social? Can you imagine? So, fortunately, Rotary came up with another avenue of focus. We have six, we had six avenues of focus. As an example, one is literacy, one is water, one is maternal health and childcare. And as we do all of this within the communities in the United States or all over the world, whatever you want to do. Another focus was disease prevention, water sanitation and treatment, and they came up with the environment. So, when they came up with the environment, my husband's saying, you know, we've got to do something with plastic. And so, we found, he found Trex Corporation was doing this, which was really amazing. And they set up a program where you go in and you set up a site for you, and you start collecting plastic. So, we're in the business, we do upholstery and draperies and all that, so we get tons of plastic from the fabrics and everything. And he said, "I can't throw this in the garbage." And that's when we found out Trex was doing this. We found out that that is a retail value of $500. They give it to you free after you give them the plastic, which is what they use to make those type of things, the decks, furniture like that. Cape, by the way, Cape Way Wicker, we found out, has all of those in different colors, and all kinds of bars and bar seats, and outdoor furniture and tables. It's amazing, they're using this now for outdoors. That'll stay out there forever, okay? But at least you're using it. This stuff that's going into the ocean, I just, I looked up something the other day, and it's really sickening, what's happened. So, a lot of you guys, if you're born before the 50s, they actually started in this country to make a lot of plastic in 1950. But they said at that time, it was just 2 million tons. That's all that was being made at the time. Now, they said it's about over 450 million tons of plastic is made in this country. And where does it go? In landfills, and it ends up in the oceans. In the ocean, it's really, really bad. I saw a picture of a beautiful shorebird, and it had plastic all around it, was stuck on it, and it could barely eat because it covered its mouth. At that point, I said to him, I said, "We've got to do something." So, we started doing this, got Ellen involved in with her class, and we're doing this all over the place. This is one of the most easiest things you guys can do. You can talk to Ellen about little specifics on what, well, it's all the, you know the little wrap around the water bottles? That's recyclable also. Anything that's wrapped around Pepsi, Coke, any kind of bottles, that's all sheet plastic. That's what they call it. That's all recyclable for Trex. It's amazing what you pick up. It doesn't take too long, right, Ellen? I mean, it was 500 pounds, now they've raised it to 1,000, because so many people were giving, they were getting benches like really quick, they said, "Wait a minute." You know, "We need at least 1,000 to give you a free bench." But, and so then, you donate it. So, it's a wonderful, you get a little plaque put on it, and say where it's from, and I mean, it's wonderful, right? To recycle, it's a perfect circle. It's a win-win. Oh, it's not very long. Carl, it doesn't take long, does it? Couple weeks? Three weeks, yeah, there you go. Now, even cereal boxes, as an idea, they're inside the cereal boxes, that's recyclable, that plastic they use. And I'm trying to think what else I'm by missing, but it's amazing, when you start, when you start looking, then you say, "Oh, my." And I see, I see.
Put everything on the sign that they're collecting.
There's the sign up there. Produce bags, yeah. Dry cleaning. Yeah, yeah. So, yes, you bring it here, and then it gets to us, and then, you know. Oh, you know what, we're down in. Yeah, this is the only company we've found that does it, because they have to use it to make their product. So, they use sawdust and plastic to make that. It's amazing. And like I said, we're down in, I'm down in East Rutherford in our business, and the Meadowlands Club, they just changed their names, it was East Rutherford Carlstadt Clubs, now we're going to be just a Meadowland, so we're all down. People are coming to us like crazy, dropping off from all over Rutherford and East Rutherford, dropping off plastic. Yeah, now, we know where to take it. We take it to, we found a Kohl's that's actually up in Wayne, and they have a big 18-wheeler there that they pick up plastic from everybody all over North Bergen, and then they ship it down to them. So, it's a great, I mean, it's nothing, it's easy. Very easy to do. Okay, any questions, anybody? Thank you so much for giving me a moment to talk about it. Thank you. And guys, and they did a fantastic job. Thanks, thank the kids. This is our future here. They know about environment and recycling, right? Thank you very much, guys. Oh, yeah.
All right, thank you to our National Junior Honor Society students, to Ms. Jo, and to Meadowlands Rotary for presenting us with this bench. At this time, I'm going to invite our Director of Special Services, Mrs. Gillian Colley. I can't multitask. That was harder than I thought. Along with one of our social workers, Mrs. Jennifer Cannon, and our behaviorist, Ms. Stephanie Heslin. So, they're going to come up. They are going to present to you on the Nurtured Heart Approach, which is part of our Dreams Grant. I'll let them actually tell you as I set it up for them, so hold on.
All right, hello, everybody. So, we're going to talk a little bit today about the Dreams Program, the Dreams Initiative that the district participates in, and then as part of that is the Nurtured Heart Approach. We'll give you a little bit of an overview of what that looks like and some of the things that we're doing across the district. So, the Dreams Program actually stands for Developing Resiliency with Engaging Approaches to Maximize Success, which is quite a mouthful, which you can understand why they made it called Dreams instead. This was part of Governor Murphy's Strengthening Youth Mental Health Initiative a few years ago. It's a partnership between the New Jersey Department of Education and the New Jersey Department of Children and Families. So, we actually were selected to participate during the 21-22 school year we started. We really just focused on Smith School. It was the first year that the grant was kind of getting off the ground, and it was a little bit of trial and error with the state, trying to figure out what exactly was going on. So, we focused on Smith School that year, and then we did apply again for the following year to expand it throughout the rest of the district. We were accepted, but the state decided to defer the program for a year till they kind of worked out the kinks, and then we were awarded participation this school year, district-wide. So, this is of no cost to the district. We have mentors that are assigned to us through Bergen's Promise. We meet with them two times a month, usually one time virtually, one time in person with our Champions Team. So, the Champions Team is made up of two to three staff members from each of our buildings, and we kind of get together to discuss different projects, different ways to roll out this initiative across the district. As part of the project, two staff members are trained to be trainers in the Nurtured Heart Approach. So, two years ago, when we did it, myself and Jamie Cavello, the counselor over at Smith School, were trained, and then this year, Jennifer Cannon and Stephanie Heslin were both trained, and they are kind of taking what they've learned and turnkey training to staff members, parents. We had a talk at Parent Partnership Night, I can't get my words out. They're providing one-to-one coaching with our staff members, and really pushing it out to all of the buildings. We have some Dreams swag, so we have some cool T-shirts that they have given us. We have swag for all of you, so don't worry, we have for everybody. Mugs, T-shirts, you know, we've been able to provide breakfast and lunch to staff at times to participate, again, all of no cost to the district through this program. But really, another big piece of it is access to the Nurtured Heart community. So, there is online message boards, there is training websites through Rutgers University, there's materials, curriculum, all types of things that we've been able to utilize. So, I will let these ladies share a little bit about what Nurtured Heart is, just kind of a brief overview, and then, if you guys have any questions.
Hi, everybody, my name is Stephanie Heslin.
And I'm Jen Cannon.
Okay, so, this is the Nurtured Heart Approach, and this is the founder and creator of the Nurtured Heart. His name is Howard Glasser. And growing up, he was actually that difficult child that we all know so well. He ended up becoming diagnosed with ADHD, and he had behavior issues and mental health issues. So, he kind of knew from the firsthand standpoint what it was like for a child like that, so he built his approach based on that. So, he has a long background in family treatment, clinical studies, and also educational leadership.
So, what does NHA focus on? It focuses on connection with others. It's building the inner wealth of yourself and others, so it's kind of building up like the self-esteem and how you present the first part of your day. You're giving your energy to the positive, and you're not giving your energy to the negative, which would be like a tantrum, you know, something going forward. Being clear about your expectations and resets for discipline and dysregulation. So, we'll go into that, into the next slide.
Okay, so, in the Nurtured Heart, there are three stands, and basically, I think, two more main components to it. So, first, we're going to tell you about the three stands and the other kind of very crucial components. So, Stand One is absolutely no, I refuse to energize negativity. I will not reward negativity with my energy, connection, or relationship. So, what does that mean?
So, you're not giving attention to the maladaptive behaviors. So, you're not ignoring it, but you're not, you're giving it a spotlight in a room to highlight it all. So, you're not fueling the fire. So, what you're going to do is, you're going to kind of give an example of a child's meltdown. Want to do the example that we did? Say like with Leo, or do you, you just want me to go in? Okay. We have a fake child named Leo, so that we practice with when we're giving stands, and there is one point that he's kind of going in, and it's kind of disrupting the class, but the teacher turns it into a positive behavior. So, you're not engaging in a back and forth with a verbal conflict. When a teacher remains regulated and neutral, you're turning away from the negativity.
So, sometimes, like as a behaviorist, I tend to see this, that sometimes inadvertently that behavioral child can end up getting a lot of attention. It might not be what they initially started having the tantrum for, but it gains attention naturally. So, this really, the point of this is that our energy, our attention is not going towards that. We're still going to handle it, but we're going to be regulated, we're going to be rationally detached.
Sure. So, the absolutely yes is you're giving that positive energy to something that they did correctly. Okay, so, I relentlessly create and energize positivity and success. I energize and nurture firsthand the experience of success. So, you're not always bringing out the negative, you're highlighting the positive. So, you're not energizing the negative, you're just highlighting the positive, so they get that positive connection with you and building that relationship.
Yeah, so this is the fire that we want to fuel. We want to fuel the positive fire. So, what does Stand Two look like? It can really be very broad, all of this in Nurtured Heart Approach is really a mindset, and it can be a little bit different for everybody. So, it's pretty broad, and it can extend to wherever you take it to. So, some examples of what it could look like include highlighting student achievements, just giving attention to positive things, like Johnny built a tower, and he's been working on that tower. Awesome, Johnny, you were working so hard on that, just giving your attention to that. Praise, that's not just good job, praise that is meaningful, genuine, and then, you know, you got to get that behavior specific in there. They know when you're being genuine and when you're not. So, that's really an important piece. Stand Two looks like building each other up and teaching the kids how to build each other up, setting up the classroom spotlight towards those kids that are doing the right things. That's where you want to really gear your spotlight, and giving out positive energy to positive things around us. So, it can be anything, it can just be, "You are sitting so nicely and quietly, thank you for that." It can be something as simple as that, you know, anything. I was going to say the shoes, but I was like, I don't know.
Or just, I love the way you walked into the room today, you know, or, you know, you have a nice smile on your face, just giving it that positive, genuine connection to that student.
Yep. So, Stand Two applied. I can write the first letter of my name, you know? So, you're highlighting the talents, successes, and the skills, you know? You're not going to point out if there's like something wrong in the way they spelled their name, is it uppercase, lowercase? She's like, "Wow, you did it, you spelt your name." You know, just giving them that positive praise and reinforcement.
And then down there is the Brights Award at Franklin School. I can't see that one, there. After they do the Brights Award. Sorry, I blocked out their faces, but they're all so cute. They go over there, they take them all afterwards, they go out into the hallway, and they hold up their envelope, and they're all smiling so big, they're all excited. And they feel so proud, and they take a picture every month, and then Jim puts it in the media side in the hallway, and the kids always walk past that media side and look at it, you know? So, that's like, you know, it gives back over and over. And this is just another example of Stand Two. This is one of our amazing teachers in Franklin School. She really energizes the positive. She's so good about that, she took this classroom and turned them around this year because she's able to not gear her attention towards the negative, and she really highlights the positive.
Just by, you could tell just by the way she's looking and interacting with the class, taking that, even though they could be on a break and playing, she's still taking that time to foster that relationship with them, building that positive praise by sitting there playing with them. She could be sitting at her desk and just filling out something, but she's taking those couple of minutes to really enjoy what they're doing and have them talk freely and about their excitement of the day or what they're building. So, Stand Three, absolutely clear. I always provide a true consequence. I set and enforce clear limits and clear consequence in an unenergized way. Remember video game logic.
So, absolutely clear, what does that look like? You know, they need to know, it's, people, sometimes adults assume. You know, they need to know, it's, people, sometimes adults assume that kids know all of what we're expecting. And the truth is, a lot of times if you probe, a lot of times they don't know those expectations and they really vary from adult to adult, too. So providing those clear expectations is really important. Rules and procedures are well-known and understood, so you can see those classrooms where the kids can run themselves, because they know that routine, they know those specific expectations. Clear expectations means not being wishy-washy. I mean, you know, really, if you go by this approach, you're really not supposed to bend at all, but, you know, honestly, I think the best you can. Like you say, you got to follow through, you know? You got to follow through. Don't say it if you're not going to follow through. Reviewing expectations before a lesson. I love going into certain classrooms because they sit there and the teacher sits down and she shows them pictures of what she expects, or she reviews exactly how, what she wants to see. And then you see them all, you know, quickly trying to get themselves together. It's really a wonderful antecedent procedure and then they're able to be successful, you know, and then they're proud of themselves. And then, you know, the class can run itself.
And what you can actually see, too, before we go into the next one, is you're starting to see some of the students regulate themselves, like taking a deep breath, like they could almost feel like the behavior coming on and they're starting to learn now to step back and we call a reset, which they know to take a deep breath or to just like close your mind for a few minutes and like count to five before they're getting to that escalated behavior approach in a classroom. So they're learning with all the expectations, like, oh, I can do this, too, and calm myself down. Okay, so where are we? So these are just some examples of a classroom in a classroom. I follow directions the first time, I use my walking feet, and I keep my hands, feet, and whole body to myself.
It's just very clear to the children. You know, in Washington School, one of the things that we do every month is, we'll talk about it, but we go into the classroom and we review the rules with them and SEL approaches. And we always go over this, we always go over it with pictures, and we also act it out. And they enjoy that part, you know, when you act silly and you're falling down, but it really helps them to understand truly what we're expecting and why. Okay, so there's a couple of other really important parts of this approach. And one thing is building that inner wealth in our children, ourselves, and others. So we really need to do everything we can to help build us so that we're stronger on the inside.
So here are some examples of how we build inner wealth in school so far. So we have our formal SEL activities, you know, in our class, at Washington School, all of the pre-K classes meet in the gym in the morning and it's led by a different teacher each week. And it's like, whether it's following directions of get your sillies out, you know, head, shoulders, knees, and toes, using language that is respectful and kind, sharing genuine compliments, praise when they meet individualized success. Even our little preschool students know when you're genuine or not genuine, because they know that trust, they know, you know, they start to build that bond with you and they know when you're, you know, upset or if you're now like angry. So it's positive to, you know, keep it genuine, so they follow that clear expectation. As we build our own empathy, we can build the inner wealth of others naturally.
So I was just thinking about this teacher when you were talking. There's this teacher in first grade, she's, I just learned that she's only teaching two years, Ms. Brosnan? Oh, sorry. She's an amazing teacher. She's an amazing teacher. But anyway, I was, I went into her classroom the other day and every time I go in there, I'm like amazed by her. And I wasn't sure whether I saw connection from her, because with all of her kids, she has this like connection with them. They run to see her in the morning, they run to see her after snack, after recess. They always tell her all their stories in the morning. But at the same time, like the last time I went in there with another student, they were having this really awesome class-wide conversation and I was just like amazed because the kids in there felt so empowered to talk, to share their information. They were talking about something, some sort of like social studies topic. And this one, the teacher brought up the person they were talking about and then another kid shared and then this one girl got so into it, she stood up and she's like, no, but I don't think that she should have done this because X, Y, Z. And everyone's like, yeah! But I mean, for me, I was like, wow, it's like connection and inner wealth, because she has this beautiful connection with each of them where they feel that confidence, you know? But at the same time, because she sets up that environment, that safe environment, it builds their inner wealth. So, I mean, again, it's like they, they do all go back and forth.
Right, and it goes back to building that same, the trust with the student, because they're so excited to even share like the littlest thing on the weekend, what's going on. I was there one time and somebody shared that they tried something new for dessert that they made with their mom, but they felt, you know, they were so excited and somebody else, oh, I did this. So they just all have that connection of even building, talking with each other and building listening skills and everything as you're building that positive praise. So inner wealth happening in Saddle Brook. So here we are. When they feel good on the inside, they're more open to learning and celebrating them and their special days. So here we have some activities that we did. One of them was going towards when we did Nor Diversity Week and just doing little projects with them going forward, or if it's celebrating a birthday or, you know, just enjoying class time and, you know, feeling confident to raise their hand.
And to me, those smiles that they show here, they're all genuine smiles. Though, to me, that's the type of smile that we want to see, because that's when they're open to learning, you know, and they're, they're feeling strong on the inside.
So inner wealth building built in Saddle Brook with our SEL lessons. Monthly and weekly SEL lessons to promote inner wealth building. Here, you'll see at the bottom left, there, Stephanie was doing an activity with them, was that the slime that you were making?
The sensory bottles.
The sensory bottles for that one. And then, it's just listening, but they're all excited to learn. And we tied in with, what are their emotions and, you know, what do emotions look like? So we bring, we kind of tie it into everything during the day.
Yeah, we've been trying to generally go once a month into the classrooms to teach some sort of SEL topic and relate it to emotions and behavior, because it's especially important in the young ages, but also like some of the classes, we do weekly social skills, but that's kind of what we're using to formally introduce that inner wealth piece. And then lastly, we have connection.
So it is connection. It's forming really that positive relationship with our students and each other and getting down to their level, literally. So if somebody is coming up and they're upset, and especially if, you know, somebody's a little shorter than you, getting down to their level and talking to them, because you're having that eye contact and that also helps build that positive and genuine relationship with them. Showing respect and genuine care for students and colleagues, playing with the students as we saw earlier, taking that five minutes out if we were on a, you know, playground with them, just getting to know them, you know? Doesn't have to be playing a game, you could just sit near, talk, you know, like, oh, what's something fun that you do over the weekend? So again, it's building relationships. Talking to students about their interests, which I just said, and listening to students when they talk. That's a main thing. It's, you know, really listen to them and put yourself in their shoes as what they're trying to say, because sometimes it's hard for them to explain with their emotions, because their emotions are so big. So again, it's back to relationships. That's this whole thing, some, it's something that we actually do every single day that we don't realize. It's just written out for us in a, you know, a way to understand. But we all do this every day if we take, you know, five minutes to learn.
Yeah, yeah, it's a mindset. And I just want to like just highlight that listening to students when they talk. I think listening can go a really long way when you connect with other people, children, whoever it is. I think anybody you ask, they want to be listened to and especially kids, like, you know, a lot of times we're really busy and we have a lot of things that we're doing and so we try to do the dishes while we're listening to them, but they want someone to genuinely listen to what they're saying and have an interest and ask questions and dive into their world with them. So if you just do that, it's so easy to make a connection with them. And so here, here's our gym teacher, Mr. Rogers. Everybody loves Mr. Rogers. Everybody loves, oh, I'm sorry, I did it again. I'm sorry! Yeah, so here's some connection applied for you. And then in the end, in the end, in my world, there are no bad kids, just impressionable, conflicted, young people wrestling with emotions and impulses, trying to communicate their feelings and needs the only way they know. I mean, they're kids, you know? One of the teachers that was up here, I'm not going to say her name, she, she always says that. She always says, they're kids, we just need to teach them. She's right.
And just, I just want to say like one takeaway that I really took from this training, you don't realize how much just that smile and greeting in the morning starts everyone's day off. I understa, like, we all have stuff going, and I'm not going to say we don't have a bad day, and that's not going to happen, but the way you present yourself to your child and also think about maybe something that happened at home is the way they may act that day, but if you present that smile in the morning, that could really change their mindset for the entire day and you could build that relationship with that child. So that's my one takeaway that I really stand out with me. And we have swag now.
Yeah, we do have swag. And as you can tell, these ladies are very passionate about this. We picked them for a reason to participate in this, but we are excited about all the things that we're doing in the classrooms and how we're kind of spreading this message across the different buildings. And, you know, we would happily provide additional training to parents or staff members, so if there's anyone interested, definitely don't hesitate to reach out to us, because we have books and all kinds of stuff that we have access to that we'd be happy to share.
Thank you, ladies. I just want to share, so there's monthly dream meetings that we have in the district and it's more of a support system. So these ladies are a big part of it, we have a whole team in the district. And when we have, you know, we've seen an uptick in behaviors, especially in our primary grades, and we have a support system now where we meet with the dreams representatives and our in-district team and we're able to share what's happening, what we can do, what we've tried already, what's worked, what hasn't worked. And it really has helped us as a district to kind of figure out, because every, every child is different from the other. So it really does help us as a district to figure out how best to make that child successful and make them feel good about themselves. So thank you to those three ladies. And Brooke Hannenberg is here, too, our supervisor of special services. The four of them have really spearheaded this entire initiative in our district and not an easy task. We started out with Jeff Smith School two years ago and this year we're district-wide, so from Washington to the high school. So a big thank you. I'm going to let them give you swag. Can we take a five-minute recess? And I'll let them give you some, some of their swag and we can have a little five-minute break and then we'll reconvene. Thank you. Okay, thank you. I'm doing a quick recap. We actually approved the budget last week, we did a full presentation last week, but I did want to just provide a quick recap of the budget. These slides are posted. of the budget. These slides are posted on the website, so you do have access to them. So I'm just going to go through a bunch of these. Our board members, thank you very much for their support. Essentially, our budget is comprised mostly of our teacher's salaries and benefits, our staff salaries and benefits, all the contractual items, which are custodians, our power professionals, our secretaries and teachers, benefits, added district tuition, transportation. That's the bulk of our budget. There's very little left that we're able to use. These are the buildings and fields that we're responsible for. These are some projects that we've, that we're working on, that we, that we're doing over the summer, I believe. So concrete repairs, HVAC repairs, repairing some of fencing in, in our school buildings. This is a sample of the items that are included in this, in next year's budget. Band uniforms, which we're in need, a funtronic floor for Washington School, which we're really excited about to support our youngest learners. A lot of technology items are included on there, and flexible seating, and then you can see to the right what's going to be used with ESTA funds and title funds. And final site is our website, so our website's going to be reimagined as well. We also have new staffing. So with our students, we definitely have seen an increase in individualized education plans, our IAPs, which is our special education program, and with that has come the need for more special education teachers, as well as a speech-language pathologist, because it's mandated. If it's in the IAP, we must supply it, so we do need those positions. So those positions were required to have. And tier-two mental health counselor we've had since COVID, and we're just seeing a great need to keep a tier-two mental health counselor in district, as well as a full-time custodian. We looked at our custodian and their square footage that they're responsible for, and we were in need of another full-time custodian. This is the slide that impacts our community members, so we wanted to make sure we shared this. Your taxes are projected to increase $233 for the average house assessed at approximately 462-200, which comes to $19.44 per month. So as I shared what was included in the budget, and then this is some of the items that we're celebrating that we have completed over the course of this year. I'm not going to go through all of these, but we do have six new courses at the middle school, high school for next year. We focus a lot on the youth mental health first aid and teen mental health first aid, our parent partnership nights, our security festivals in each of our buildings are completed. We do have a threat assessment team in the district, working hard on mass notifications. You receive texts, phone calls, and emails from me, as well as app notifications. We have interactive displays in our classrooms. We're starting to put those in. Our smart boards are old. Our smart projectors are not working anymore, and the parts are irreplaceable, so we're purchasing the interactive displays, which will look like televisions, and you can interact with them. And we have some new student bathrooms here. We had some ESL family engagement nights. We had three of them over the course of this year. We have some athletic accomplishments. And then a lot of our clubs that are really growing in our elementary schools, as well as our middle school, high school, with very dedicated club leaders and students. So they're doing a lot of good in our district, and it's nice to see them so active. So that is, I just wanted to do a quick budget recap. Please take your time. Go through the slides. If you have any questions, don't hesitate to reach out to my office. And, and I told you it was a quick recap, and we, we will answer any of your questions. So thank you. Wanted to make sure we share that, and we are now going to continue with the rest of our scheduled meeting. So thank you.
You're shut down?
Pokey, pokey.
So we go to you now, right? Okay, so we're going to go with, to the business administrators' report. Mr. Karati?
Thank you, President Ayinello. Just a few items I have. After tonight's, what's on tonight's agenda, we'll be moving forward with the renovation work at Coolidge School. And I would like to set up a tour of the building for the board members so they could see the building before and after. So we set that up in the next few weeks. Also on the agenda tonight is the bathroom project here at the middle school, high school. It will also be awarded tonight, and that work will be done over the summer. We are working with the architect to put together plans to replace the roof areas that were noted in the referendum, and we expect that to get most of that work done this summer as well. And we are still waiting for the NJDEP approval for our application for the turf field and lights. We don't know, they don't, they don't reply too often to you. We're trying to get information, but it's a slow process. And Mr. O'Donnell, supervisor of Bullions and Grounds, is working on gathering quotes. So we approved, like Ms. Violetta said, the budget last week, and we're moving forward, getting projects in line for this summer that were noted in the budget. So there's a lot going on, but it's all good stuff for the district. That concludes my report.
We're going to go back to the superintendent for a moment?
Thank you. I have one more. I wanted to inform the board that we are working with a grant writer right now. There was a grant that came out for school safety, and we are working with this grant writer to develop a grant to, to include within our building some door access controls and AI with our cameras to follow around, and a whole bunch of other things. But with this grant, part of it is to ask support from certain members of the community. So there will be letters that will be, or emails that will be sent out with a template of a letter, asking community members to write a letter of support, in support of the grant. So I just wanted to share a little bit. We just had our first meeting, so we're, we're going to have weekly meetings, and we will give you more information as we have it.
I have a quick question on that. Who's going to be writing the grant?
The person that we are working with.
Okay. Thank you. Okay. All right. At this time, can I have a motion to open the meeting to the public for agenda items and policy only?
Motion?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Would anybody from the community like to speak about agenda items only? So what's on the agenda? No? Okay, so then can I have a motion to close the meeting?
Motion?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, so we're going to go to board action items. So we have B2324 dot 40 through B2324 dot 42. Can I have a second?
Second.
Discussion. Does anybody have a question or want to discuss anything? Okay, great. Then roll call, please. Mr. Karati?
Ms. Torvik?
Yes.
Ms. Traverso?
Yes.
Ms. Adorelli?
Yes.
Ms. Raccamondo?
Yes.
Ms. Baralli?
Yes.
Mr. Laurentino?
Yes.
Ms. Roloff?
Yes.
Ms. Ayinello?
Yes.
Okay. Ms. Traverso?
Education and curriculum. At the recommendation of the superintendent, I make a motion to approve the following items. E2324 dot 44 through E2324 dot 47.
Can I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion?
The field trips are one of our ABA classrooms to a sensory gym, and one of our clubs at the middle school, high school has taken a trip.
Good? Okay. Can we have roll call, please?
Ms. Torvik?
Yes.
Ms. Traverso?
Yes.
Ms. Adorelli?
Yes.
Ms. Raccamondo?
Yes.
Ms. Baralli?
Yes.
Mr. Laurentino?
Yes.
Ms. Roloff?
Yes.
Ms. Ayinello?
Yes.
Okay. Budget and finance, Mr. Raccamondo?
Okay. At the recommendation of the superintendent, I make a motion to approve the following items. BF2324 dot 95 to BF2324 dot 119.
Can I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Questions?
I will share. Point 116 is to continue the playground building at, at Washington School, so it's awarding fees to of playground equipment. And then I also wanted to share 117. That's a partnership with the South Bergen Joint Sheriff Commission, who they have tons of resources to offer us as a district. For example, if we have a child that needs additional speech services, or OT, or PT services, we can contract with them if we are not able to fulfill those needs within our district, as well as transportation, as well as emotional regulation impairment supports. So there is professional development and curriculum writing, so it's a one-time payment, and then we are a member of them forever.
Thank you.
Any, does anybody else have anything they want to share? Okay. Can we have roll call, please?
Ms. Torvik?
Yes.
Ms. Traverso?
Yes.
Ms. Adorelli?
Yes.
Ms. Raccamondo?
Yes.
Ms. Baralli?
Yes.
Mr. Laurentino?
Yes to all, but I'm abstaining under BF2324 dot 95. Check 2160 to 2490.
Ms. Roloff?
Yes.
Ms. Ayinello?
Yes to all, but in BF2324 dot 95, I'm going to abstain from check numbers 2121, 2453, 65199. And then in BF2324 dot 96, I'm going to abstain from item number 108. Yes to everything else.
Okay.
All right, so we have facilities and operations. Ms. Torvik?
At the recommendation of the superintendent, I make a motion to approve the following items. F2324 point 12 and F2324 point 13.
Can I have a second?
Second.
Does anyone have any discussion or questions? No? Okay, can we have roll call?
Ms. Torvik?
Yes.
Ms. Traverso?
Yes.
Ms. Adorelli?
Yes.
Ms. Raccamondo?
Yes.
Ms. Baralli?
Yes.
Mr. Laurentino? Ms. Roloff?
Yes.
Ms. Ayinello?
Yes.
Okay. Policy, Ms. Roloff?
At the recommendation of the superintendent, I make a motion to approve the following items. Policy 2324 point 4.
Second.
Any discussion? Okay. Okay. Roll call, please?
Ms. Torvik?
Yes.
Ms. Traverso?
Yes.
Ms. Adorelli?
Yes.
Ms. Raccamondo?
Yes.
Ms. Baralli?
Yes.
Mr. Laurentino?
Yes.
Ms. Roloff?
Yes.
Ms. Ayinello?
Yes.
Okay. Negotiations?
Nothing we can report at this time.
Okay. All right, thank you. All right. Personnel, Mr. Laurentino?
At the recommendation of the superintendent, I make a motion to approve the following items. P2324 dot 76 through P2324 dot 84.
Second.
Any discussion or questions?
Sure. First, I want to just share that we do a lot of our discussions on Mondays, which is why it might seem to be quiet tonight. P2324 point 77, number one, is Mrs. Schwartz's replacement at Franklin as a music teacher, and number two is another substitute nurse that we're really excited to keep on building our subnurses across the district.
Anyone else? Okay. Roll call, please?
Ms. Torvik?
Yes.
Ms. Traverso?
Yes.
Ms. Adorelli?
Yes.
Ms. Raccamondo?
Yes.
Ms. Baralli?
Yes.
Mr. Laurentino?
Yes.
Ms. Roloff?
Yes.
Ms. Ayinello?
Yes to all, but in P2324 dot 82, I'm going to abstain from item number 10. Okay. So now we're going to go to committee reports. Budget and finance, Mr. Raccamondo? Do you have anything?
Uh, nope. Ray filled that out till, uh, week, well, Monday, I'm sorry.
Okay. Facilities and operation, Ms. Torvik? Negotiations?
At this time, cannot report anything. We are meeting, though.
Okay. Policy, Ms. Roloff? Okay.
We bed tonight, so.
Okay. Um, all right, so then we're going to go to liaison report. Ms. Adorelli?
Yeah, let me just pull it up here.
Okay.
Franklin School has not had their PTO--
Oh, wait a minute.
We're doing this--
That's for the VCSB.
Oh, all right.
Do you have anything--
Last night, we went to the school board's Teacher of the Year presentation and acknowledgement of board members. Mr. Raccamondo was acknowledged for being a 10-year term trustee, and other than that, it was it. And I want to congratulate him. 10 years, Mike.
It was a very nice evening, and it was very nice to be able to share that moment with him.
Absolutely.
Okay. The education foundation, Ms. Torvik?
None of this.
Okay. CPAC, Ms. Traverso?
Nothing at this time.
Okay. The township, do we want, do we want to--
We did meet with, with the township liaison, we had a township liaison meeting. We spoke about safety precautions that we can create specifically in this building with, in regards to crossing the street, making a concrete walkway, maybe a crossing path and signs, pedestrian walking signs, flashing signs. We spoke about Cambridge at Smith's School that sometimes people don't realize it's a one-way off a saddle- river road, so maybe putting a cone or another sign there. So we, we kind of brainstormed different safety precautions across the district. And, and also to the board members, we spoke about the communication with the events, the town events and the Board of Ed events, and as you saw today, the township was kind enough to share their monthly calendar with us, and Gina Galvin was kind enough to put it on our Google Calendar, so that way, and they said they're going to do it monthly, so I really appreciate their partnership. So thank you to the township for that.
Thank you. Okay, so PTO, PTA liaisons, Franklin School, Ms. Adorelli?
Okay, now, just let me pull it up. One second. Okay. Franklin School hasn't had their PTO meeting yet. It's going to be meeting next week, but they're on their agenda. Their K through 1 fun night was very well attended, and the kids had fun. Teacher of the week, families sent in treats each and every day. Lunch from the PTO will be tomorrow. The sixth grade trip is May 17th. The Buy One Get One Book Fair Week is 5:20. They're planning for Field Day, and they already ordered the Field Day shirts. They're getting ready for graduation, and tomorrow, I don't know, I guess she put it in, so the staff is getting Panera.
Banana.
Okay, thank you. Okay, Smith School, Mr. Raccamondo?
Yes. Okay. Sorry, this is real tiny. Smith is celebrating the teachers and staff all week with lots of goodies. Thank you to all the families and local businesses who have chipped in. Shout out to Grumpy's Pizza, Bagel Run, Mom's Organic, Olive Garden, Starbucks, Clyde's Italian Ice, and the Elmwood Park Diner. The spring book fair is scheduled for next week. They will host Family Night on Wednesday, May 15th, and they are currently hosting a coin battle to raise funds for Field Day. The staff member who has the most money in the jar will get pied in the face. Thank you to Ms. Murphy, Ms. Chapman, Mr. Nick, and Ms. Plummer for volunteering. Good luck. And their next meeting is May 22nd. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, Long School, Ms. Traverso?
Yes. Long School has just completed today their three-day, I believe it was three-day book fair, and the Teacher Affirmation Week is also still currently ongoing. They are thanking all families for their generositys of donations and/or support. Upcoming fundraisers, Field Day will be held on May 31st with a rain date of June 7th, and their tricky trade is being held on Monday, June 3rd at the Paramus Elts Lodge. Long Memorial School families can currently purchase admission tickets at tables of 10. Any interest in that should be referred to the PTO of that school, and they are still looking for donations of e-gifs, gift cards, baskets, and so forth. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Okay, for the middle school, high school, I want to say thank you to the PTO for arranging all they've done for the teachers this week. I know that that's not a small endeavor, so it's greatly appreciated. I thank also the community for donating and for sponsoring the teachers, and if you still want to sponsor a teacher, you can do so. Please email PTO SB-- Please email PTO-SBMSHS@gmail, I'm sorry, gmail, yeah, gmail.com, and you could let sick Mattellus know who is the teacher you would like to sponsor their lunch. And then they will have a meeting possibly at the end of this month. They have not scheduled anything, but once they do, it'll be communicated to you through Mr. Maish, and it'll be on the website as well. Okay, and that is that. Washington School, Ms. Torvik?
Yes. So this Friday night will be Washington's movie night. It'll be for Washington School families, and they will be watching Migration in the gym. And I wanted to note that there were muffins, the muffins for mom event today, that the muffins were donated by a parent. And apparently, according to Mrs. Valetti, they were delicious.
Is that it? Okay. All right. Do we have correspondence? Nope. Okay. Old business. Do we have any old business? Yeah. Go ahead.
Two quick things. You know, get our board goal that says increase the number of presentations at BAW meetings by students and staff. And we come in each month, and we watch these tremendous presentations that the staff gives. So it gives the public an opportunity to see all the great things that our district is doing. I just think under Ms. Valetti's leadership, with your leadership team, Ray used the words tonight, his birthday, saying moving forward. I really feel like we're moving forward in a very positive direction, offering people a sound, perfect, great education. So really, our staff, teachers, Ms. Valetti, Ray, all just want to recognize you for the great job that you do, and at least now we see it. And my second thing, Mike, I apologize, I missed the meeting last night, but doing 10 years on the board, I've done five, and you've done twice as much as I've done. So really, thank you for all you do, and thank you for putting up and giving 10 great years of service.
Thank you so much. I appreciate that.
That was very nice. Anything else? Old, old business?
Oh, no.
New business?
Through the chair. First, I want to thank the New Jersey School Boards for their recognition, and then you guys for all the kind words, and you guys for having faith in me and voting me in all the time. So thank you so much. And so I don't forget, Happy Mother's Day to all the moms out there.
Oh, thank you, Michael.
And enjoy.
Anyone else?
Can I share?
Oh, absolutely.
No, go ahead. I want to, first, I'm going to say congratulations to Mr. Ionello. What was that award that he won again?
I honestly don't know, because he didn't tell me.
American Division.
Athletic Director of the Year.
Director of the Year. Congratulations to him. And I want to just congratulate Grace Wien again on her accomplishment, and tell you all that she is up to 127 strikeouts at this point.
She's doing an amazing job.
She's doing an amazing job. And she's a freshman, which I don't know if that was said, so congratulations. And congratulations, Michael. Happy Mother's Day.
On that note, I'd like to thank, acknowledge my husband. He didn't even tell me that he was honored with this, so I had literally no idea until I heard this tonight, so I'm very happy for him.
I just want to congratulate Michael again. But I did think it was mandatory, the meeting.
It's okay, you got points for it anyway.
We'll see if we can take your points away.
Okay. Does anyone else?
If I?
Yeah, absolutely.
I forgot, and I apologize to the community, usually the meetings are not this long, but I forgot to mention I'm having my second or third Superintendent Student Advisory Council meeting. It's the morning of May 21st, it's a Tuesday. I did send out a Google form. It's for every, it's for high school students, for our students to sign up. And we meet in the media center, and we have some bagels, and we talk about our schools. It doesn't have to just be the middle school, high school, but how we can improve. We get their input. They had some great input last time about, you know, the bathrooms at the field house, and the girls' bathroom didn't have a mirror, so we have since, oh, sorry, we have since installed a mirror, and now I'm requesting a full-length mirror, so we'll see if we're able to get that. I walked in, I'm like, well, it's half a mirror. But they do have some really valuable input with our courses that we're offering at the high school, and just with our procedures in the building as well. So I welcome all the high school students to sign up and join me the morning of May 21st. You do have to register on the Google form, so I can make sure we have enough bagels. So thank you.
I would like for the bagel. Okay. Thank you. Anyone else? Okay. So, okay, at this time, can I have a motion to open the meeting to the public?
Motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Someone, hold on. You could come up. I just have to read a really long thing. Really long. I think so. I need the, the really big version. Okay. All right, here we go. Residents are requested to state their name, address, and subject matter. In the event it appears the public comment portion of the meeting may exceed 45 minutes, the presiding officer may limit each statement made by a participant to five minutes duration. Issues raised by members of the public may or may not be responded to by the board. All comments will be considered, and a response will be forthcoming if and when appropriate. The board asks that members of the public be courteous and mindful of the rights of others, other individuals when speaking. Specifically, comments regarding students and employees of the board are discouraged and will not be responded to by the board. Students and employees have specific legal rights afforded by the laws of New Jersey. The board bears no responsibility, nor will it be liable for any comments made by members of the public. Members of the public should consider their comments in light of the legal rights of those afforded or identified in their comments, and be aware that they are legally responsible and liable for their comments.
Thank you. My name is Sahar Salem, parent of two students at Long Memorial, hopefully a third student. Does this work? Because I can't hear. My hearing is bad, allergies. Saddle River Road, 787 is our address. So we're here as a community to request a couple of things. We've emailed Ms. Valetti about, and I'm hoping and sure most of you are aware of our requests. I want to keep it short and respect your time. I wanted to congratulate you for the 10 years, and I think it might have been 11, but that's a long time. So thank you.
Yeah, thank you so much.
And I just also wanted to recognize that. I do appreciate everything you do for our children and our students. I know it's not easy, and you guys work long hours, and your hard work doesn't go unrecognized. I'm always praising Saddle Brook Schools. I love our teachers. And every time I come to these meetings, I learn more. I just learned about the program you have, I shared my information, because as parents, we need to learn how to praise our children more, and we tend to forget that. So I appreciate the programs that you offer, and hopefully we could all benefit from them, and I'm sure we do. With that said, we're here today because we have a couple of requests, and I don't want to go into details about each request, again, to be respectful of your time. The first request, and these, if you consider them requests, we're also here to help facilitate those requests. It's not here to dump some jobs on you and, hey, figure it out. No, we're here as parents, community members, to help in any way that we can, and anything you need from us, we are more than willing. So the first request would be that we would like to see that Eid, Eid is a holiday for Muslims, and we'd like to see it off. We have two Eids a year. We don't expect a week for each Eid, we expect just a day. We just had Eid after Ramadan, and they are excused absences for our children. However, I do tend to struggle with whether I should let my kid attend that day or not. We have an upcoming Eid that falls on the kindergarten graduation. My son's graduating kindergarten this year. So Eid is that Monday, and it's a struggle. Do I go to mosque? Do my prayers and have the kids, you know, commemorate the festivities, and they love it and enjoy it? Because we do our prayer, and right after, they have bounce houses and quilts things at the mosque for the kids? Or do I attend my kid's graduation? And he graduates kindergarten once, so, you know, to balance that, it's hard. And it's not just me. We have at least five students at Long that are graduating kindergarten this year, who are Muslims that practice Islam. And then this request doesn't just go for Muslim students. We'd hope that having Eid off helps students ask questions about why they're off, and that they learn about Muslims and the beauty of Islam, and how not that different Muslims are in what they practice than, you know, most other monotheistic religions. And that's one of the requests. The second request would be to integrate something that New Jersey had recognized, American Muslim Heritage Month as January. And the Governor Murphy had put out a proclamation stating that January will be American Muslim Heritage Month. And we, I had emailed a whole, you know, website to help also integrate that into our classrooms, and I don't expect us to celebrate it the whole month, but it would be nice if we put it in like, I know we have like a glass display at Long, if we have something there where kids could ask questions and learn, and then maybe add it to like a lesson plan where kids could ask questions and learn about accomplishments of American Muslims and their history, and contributions to the United States. And I think that would help also eradicate a lot of Islamophobia that's happening and continues to happen throughout the years since, I mean, during my time, it started in 9/11, and then it just continued on as we engage in different conflicts, I should say. The third request, and I think we agreed that we do it, is holding fairs that are for people to, what are they called? Multicultural fairs? Thank you. Multicultural fairs, so everyone could feel comfortable in displaying and teaching about their cultures and heritage. And that goes for all, you know, cultures, not just Muslims and not just Middle Eastern ers. So these are things that we would like to see in Saddle Brook, and we'd hope that you'd consider and also take our hand in helping facilitate any of this. Anything you need from us, we're here and willing and able to. So thank you, and thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hey, good evening. Quad Malik, 270 Hillside Avenue. I just want to support in everything she said, I don't want to repeat the words, word for word, but I have a seven-year-old daughter in first grade at Franklin School. Her biggest question is, how come they get off for Christmas and we can't observe Eid? So I would really appreciate if you guys take it into serious consideration. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
My name is Bashir Sheikh, and I moved here from Hillsdale. Was in Hillsdale for 34 years, and 2014, I moved to Saddle Brook. Anyway, I work for the City of New York as the principal engineer, Building Department. City of New York also has the Eid holiday, the Muslim holidays, for the whole city, public schools. And I believe recently, last year or so, Aramas had declared that too, and some other towns, Fire Lawn. So I appreciate if you can, you know, consider this for our town, the Saddle Brook, you know. Like this sister said, you know, we support her proposal. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, everyone. My name is Jessica. I'm at 37 Rochelle Parkway. I'm a Saddle Brook High School alumni. I'm also part of the EMS squad here in Saddle Brook, and I'm also an ICU nurse at Hackensack. So thank you again for everything you guys do for us. I've definitely seen all the hard work that comes into making schools what they are, so thank you. Something that I will say from my own personal experience, though, is there's definitely a need for people to understand Muslims in the community, same as other religions and cultures, but especially at a time where in America it's very difficult to be a Muslim especially. I think it's definitely necessary. There are, I believe, 42 other schools in New Jersey that do have off for Eid, so I think that it would definitely be a good thing for Saddle Brook to be a part of that. I never felt unsafe in Saddle Brook. People knew I was Muslim, and I never felt that I wasn't welcome, although I do feel that there is a lack of education for students, especially the younger students, and especially in high school. I think, of course, it has to do with them getting that education at home, and it has to do with, you know, parental education for their children. And I think that in high school, you are old enough to also educate yourself as well. But I think that as a system, it definitely can come from us as well. So I think it's definitely done, and there's a need for it. And if there's anything you guys need from, from me or the community, we're more than happy to help. I mean, I think I can speak on behalf of, you know, the Muslims in Saddle Brook, that we are definitely feeling the acceptance, although we definitely need more representation. So thank you for your time.
Thank you.
M-O-A-T-I.
Good evening. My name is Jai Dahaton. I live in 25 Alberta Drive. I've lived here since 2009. We have three kids that passed through, you know, Saddle Brook, wonderful school system. And, you know, my daughter is Meheri Namine. She wears a hijab, and all her friends welcome her for who she is. And it's a wonderful, you know, community we're in, and we love it here, but we'd like to, you know, voice our voice and, you know, get the support. And we've been given the support, but for you to go an extra mile to make it more inclusive for us, that would be great. And thank you. Thank you, Sahar, for initiating this whole thing.
Thank you.
Yep.
Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Shahid Sheikh. I am 428 Van Nuys Terrace is my address. I'm a civil engineer, PE by profession, and I work for U.S. Army Corps of Engineers. I have a very good reputation at work as well. And since I came to U.S. from India, I have been living in Saddle Brook. And I moved to Animal Park for like two, three years. I said, no, let's go back to Saddle Brook. That's the best town to live in. And since then, I'm here. I have three kids. My daughter already graduated from here. She is in NJID right now. My other two are, one in high school, one in elementary. So I support sister, who started the communication with the Board of Education, and I, I hope you guys consider it. And Saddle Brook has already recognized Muslims this year by celebrating crescent lightning, which we did during the start of the month of Ramadan. And that was well-appreciated to everyone, and there was a big lot of people who showed up over there. Mayor was also there. Our sheriff, who is 2B, Sheriff Kugler, hope he wins the election this year. So he was there as well. So it was supported by our whole community. So I, on behalf of the Muslim community of Saddle Brook, I will request you to please consider these three points. And we see, as said, any help from us, like which days you need and all the stuff, we can communicate accordingly. Thank you very much.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. Anyone else? All right, can I have a motion to close the meeting to the public?
Motion?
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
I just, first of all, want to thank our community members for representing the Muslim population. Thank you for expressing all this information to us. You have sparked a conversation, so please know that. I did share all the information with the board. We have started talking through all the different items that were shared with us. We will continue the conversation, and I will be in touch with the people that previously emailed me, so I will definitely follow up. But I thank you for being so kind, respectful, and thoughtful in your presentation. So thank you.
Thank you. Okay. No?
No.
Okay.